Not quite in McAllen.
No.
We call to order City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. We have a roll call, please.
Chair John Dynan.
Here.
Vice Chair Robert Ball.
Here.
Commissioner Jon Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Melissa Hughes is absent. Commissioner Mallory Fenrich.
Here.
And Commissioner Steve Link.
Here.
Thank you, Jen. Any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Hearing none. Public comments. We'll open it for public comments, and at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence, and please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission board. Do we have any public comments at this time? We'll move on to the consent calendar. Item 2.1, before that, are there any commissioners who wish to pull something from the consent calendar? Hearing none. Item 2.1, posting of the agenda. The agenda for the September 17th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center bulletin board, City Hall North and South bulletin boards, Post Office, City website, and email to the library on September 12th, 2019. Item 2.2, approval of the agenda. Item 2.3, approval of the minutes of the August 20th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Having been read by the individual commissioners, stand approved, this submitted. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move for approval of items 2.1 and 2.2.
You got a second on 2.1 and 2.2?
I second that.
Do we have a roll call vote, please, Janet?
Chair Dynan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve item 2.3?
Move for approval, item 2.3.
Joan, do you have a problem with 2.3?
No, just I know that several commissioners can't vote on this.
We have a roll call vote for...
I second.
I second.
Okay, Chair Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Ball.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Link has to abstain because he was absent.
Thank you, Jen. Item 3, public hearing presentations. Item 3.1, Prime Shine slash Mr. James Kinney.
So, Prime Shine Mr. Car Wash at 2375 Patterson Road is requesting architectural and site plan review for a modification to an existing car wash. They are proposing to increase the number of lanes, the three total lanes, and payment stations as well to go along with those lanes and a canopy structure over the payment stations. The purpose of this is to move traffic, alleviate any congestion and stacking on Estelle Avenue, and to kind of improve the experience for the customer. Here's an area of the site. As you can see, it's located on the northwest corner of Patterson Road and Estelle Avenue. And there's also the assessor's map for the properties. You can see it's right there on that northwest corner. Okay? And there's an existing site plan for the property. As you can see, there's a driveway along here for cars accessing the property. There's only one lane at the moment. And you'll see in the changed site plan in the next slide that there will be the payment stations and the driveway lanes as well. Sorry, it's moving too fast. So, the general plan designation for this area is community commercial, C backslash C. The zoning designation for this area is also, is general commercial, C2. And there's the frontage of the Prime Shine Mr. Car Wash facing Patterson Road. That's a north elevation. And there's looking east at the property. And those are the existing conditions for the driveway lanes. And as you can see, like, this area here will be expanded to accommodate, or will now include the three payment stations and the three driveway lanes. And these are the proposed elevations for the new canopy structure that's going to be, that will be above the payment stations and the driveway lanes. And there are some examples of the payment stations. And in order to approve the architecture site plan, architectural site plan review for this project, we have to make sure that there are findings that are consistent with the general plan for this proposal. And the sections that are identified for the design standards were policy design 2.3, traffic control devices, policy 8.3, quality materials, 10.1 pedestrian and bicycle access, and then also policy design section 10.11 bicycle security. And per CEQA, we're also required, the project must also meet CEQA requirements. So, for this project, the section that we're going with is because the project's not going to have any significant impact on the environment, it's categorically exempt, so the section that's appropriate for this project is infill, which is section 15332A to E, class 32. And... So, public notice was mailed to 35 residents and businesses surrounding the property, 300 feet within the property. Up until now, no comments or concerns have been expressed by the public or residents or businesses in the area. I'm here for any questions. We also have the applicant that's also here in case you have any questions as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Steve?
No questions.
No, nothing.
Robert? Mallory?
I have one question. Where the now third driveway is going to go? It looks like we lose a little landscaping on the north border. I just wanted to make sure that's not going to cause any issues from the neighboring church if they expressed any concerns or anything. Or is the landscaping staying the same? It just looked like in the picture that some of the landscaping along the north property line was going to go away.
True, so, that's correct. So, in... So, currently, as you can see, the existing site plan, it's up until here, which is our property, but looking at the assessor's map and working with the applicant, the property actually goes all the way up until this area here. So, that's kind of where they're expanding into. They are going to reduce some of the landscaping square footage, but with this area that they're incorporating and using, it'll minimize any issues. And, yeah, as of now, we didn't hear from any comments from the church either.
Okay.
I'll open it up for public comments. Any member of the public wishing to speak? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2019-012.
I vote. I motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have a vote, please, Janet.
Chair Dynan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Okay, that passes five vote.
Item 3.2, Dollar General LLC, Steve Rawlings, request for conditional use permit, 04-2019, license type 20, off sale beer and wine. To sell beer and wine at new Dollar General store for off-site consumption. Property is located at 5842 Roselle Avenue, APN 075-015-006.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, or, sorry, Mr. Chairperson. Anyhow, yes, this item is for a conditional use permit, 04-209, for the CUP for Dollar General, to sell beer and wine, which is a type 20 license. So, we're looking at past approvals. The, this project was, the overall project was actually approved in December 18 of 2018 under Architectural Site Plan Review 03-218, which was for a 9100 square foot general retail store. And there's a location of the, of the site. It's located on the east side of Roselle between Peterson Way and North, Northbrook Drive. This is Northbrook Drive, and this is Peterson Way. And this is the floor plan for the proposal for the Dollar General. They're going to locate the beer and wine items in this area, which is the freezer area of the store. And this slide is a picture of the elevation facing Roselle Avenue. There you can see a construction going on on the property. Here's some other pictures there at the Dollar General. They're putting up their signs as well. And as you can see, they're also putting the public off-site improvements, which is curb and gutter and sidewalk there. So, pursuant to the Riverbank Municipal Code, in order to grant any use permit, the applicant must provide evidence and support of this application, sufficient for the Planning Commission to approve the use, and of course, and make sure that there's no issues or concerns or problems that are detrimental to the health and safety and general welfare of the city. And some of the arguments that were found for this project were, it's a new general retail store. Number two, the business provides a much-needed retail and discount items for the surrounding neighborhood. Owners for the project have invested time and money into public improvements, but then also building improvements as well for the construction of it. Also, number four, the business will also enhance the experience for their customers by allowing them to purchase beer and wine items as well. The recommendation is that, determined that, for the Planning Commission, is to determine that the applicant has provided sufficient evidence for the Planning Commission to consider and find that this project is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA section article 19, 15332A through E, and for approved conditional use permit 04-2019 pursuant to the findings and conditions contained in the attached resolution. And then with this application as well, there were... 39 mailers that were mailed out to residents and businesses in the surrounding area, 300 foot radius, and as of now, no comments or concerns have been raised by the public. And the applicant is also here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mallory?
I didn't get a chance to look at it on maps. Where's the nearest school?
Is there a school nearby, the Dollar General?
Let's see, let's see. The closest school would be Crossroads Elementary. And it's, I would, I'm estimating probably at least a mile, probably two miles away.
Okay.
Yeah, we did look for surrounding businesses, the retail businesses that did sell alcohol, and the closest one's about 3100, 3500 square, or 3500 feet from it, so almost a mile as well, too.
Okay.
Robert? Joan?
Just when they've applied for the liquor license, or they have already received the liquor license.
No, they, they applied for the ABC license, with the county, with the Health Department, and then also with the city as well.
Thank you.
Steve, you have any questions?
No questions.
I'll open it up for public comments at this time. Any member of the public wishes to speak? Now is the time. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2019-013 by roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Janet, can we have a vote, please?
Chair Dynan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Link.
Yes.
All right, that passes five vote.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Planning Commission comments. Any comments from any of our commissioners? Hearing none. Do we have any county referral or correspondence information?
No, we do not.
Thank you, Donna. Staff comments.
So, at the last city council meeting, I brought forward a first reading of a sidewalk vendor ordinance. This is in response to the state kind of mandating that cities allow sidewalk vendors. So, with or without us, they were going to, or they are going to allow it. So, the city is moving forward to put some regulations on to try to, you know, help to monitor and to permit and try to control some of the chaos, I guess you might say. So, that did go for a first reading, and the second reading will be next Tuesday. If they were to approve this ordinance, then there would be a 30-day period before it becomes law. And so, I'm estimating the city, the city might be in a position to issue sidewalk vending permits probably sometime the first part of November. The permits can be obtained, or, to get a permit, you have to have a city business license, and then the permit itself is actually just a dollar. The business license can be purchased quarterly or yearly, and they would have to pay the normal fees, which is probably about $40 considering estate fee and, and the city's fees. So, there's your business license, and then the actual vending permit is a dollar. And while we can't control, we can't tell the vendors where they can go, and we can't tell them where they can't be. We can't restrict them from certain areas. But we can provide requirements through the permit. For example, if our sidewalks are only six foot wide, and you have to keep four foot clear for ADA access, and their tables three or four foot wide, they wouldn't be able to be on that sidewalk. So, there are some ways that we can kind of control how close they are together, certain areas, they may, their tables may not fit properly into the passersby, the flow of passersby. So, our ordinance was actually drafted by our city attorneys, and it does comply with state law. And, so, yeah, if you have any comments on it, then the next meeting, next Tuesday, of the city council would be the time to bring your comments forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Did you want to mention the tiny house grant?
Oh, that too. Thank you.
You have to say tiny house again.
So, after our Planning Commission meeting where I discussed the SB2 grant for technical planning services for tiny houses, I did take it to the city council, and they were very enthusiastic about it as well, and directed staff to move forward on the grant. So, if, when we apply for the grant, if it is awarded, and I believe it could be up to $130,000 or $160,000 award, it would pay for one year for a consultant to look at our code and make recommendations on possible changes for allowing, for allowing tiny houses. For example, right now in our R1 district, there is a minimum house size of 900 square feet, which isn't really tiny. So, that, right off the bat, would have to be changed. Plus, we look at design standards and setbacks and how they would fit on properties, also looking at different types of tiny house projects. Should they be allowed in backyards? Should they be allowed to be used as Airbnbs? If somebody had a vacant lot, could they have a cluster of them for a family compound? Could we use them for homelessness and getting people off the streets in the rainy season? So, there's a lot to think about as far as our code goes and the direction that the council wants to take this. And right now, as with the Planning Commission, everything is still on the table. A second component would be, as I mentioned, the design standards, heights, colors, where they can be located, setbacks. And then the third component would be an analysis of our fees. Right now, if you were to build a brand-new house, the fees that you paid to the city and the county would be around $26,000 to $30,000. Well, you can buy a tiny house on Amazon that comes in a box for like $10,000. So, no one's going to build one in their yard if they have to pay three times as much in fees as the house that they purchased. So, the consultant would be looking at that as well. So, if we won the grant, the first year, each individual city in the county would apply for whatever project they're looking at, like tiny houses or accessory dwelling units. Then the second year of funding actually goes to the county to be shared with the cities. So, a group project that the planning directors of Stanislaus County and I have been looking at have to do with possibly getting five or six sets of engineered plans for accessory dwelling units that meet California code. So, if somebody came in and wanted to put an accessory dwelling unit in their backyard, all they would have to do is pick one of the models. Planning would review it to make sure it fits their yard, and then they could get a building permit over the counter. So, that was, received a pretty enthusiastic response from the other planning directors. So, there may be a few cities going in with us the second year, if we're all successful, to do something like that for our citizens. Thank you.
Great. Any questions for Donna? Thank you, Donna. Before I adjourn, we will reconvene at 6:30, which is the posted time for the appeals board hearings, which is about six minutes. Planning Commission meeting stands adjourned. Planning Commission meeting stands adjourned.